This is the next session on education. I welcome Dr. Choi Yook Lee, Secretary for Education and her team to answer our questions. Please press the button. Dr. Choi will give us some opening remarks. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Education is the key to nurturing talents. Hong Kong has sound education infrastructure while renowned universities outstanding research talents, as well as diverse and quality-based education. The quality of our teaching and learning is ranked among the top in various international comparative studies. Building on our unique status and advantages under one country, two systems, we can better integrate into the overall developments of the country and contribute to the developments of our country in Hong Kong. In future, we will continue to make plans for education development from a holistic and long-term view to develop an international education hub, nurture and attract talents, and enhance our impetus for growth. In line with the national strategy of invigorating the country through science and education, we will foster new quality productive forces and strive for high-quality developments, thereby contributing to the building of a leading country in education and nation strong in science and technology. To provide better education for children, we will enhance the quality of education to nurture our young people to become virtuous, knowledgeable, and responsible lifelong learners with global perspectives, positive values, and attitude, love for the country and the city who are ready for future challenges and opportunities. The government's expenditure on education will be one hundred fifteen point seven million billion dollars in this year, accounting for about fifteen percent of the total government expenditure. The recurrence expenditure on education has over the past ten years increased by forty-eight percent, with an average growth rate of four point four percent per annum. This demonstrates the government's determination and commitment to investing in education. In the two thousand twenty-four to twenty-five financial year, we will implement various new initiatives to enhance the quality and diversity of education, as well as strengthening support for students. Measures for post-secondary and vocational and professional education and training include: One, supporting potential self-financing post-secondary institutions to form an alliance of universities and applied sciences. We announced on the twenty-first of March this year that the Hong Kong Metropolitan University had fulfilled the relevant criteria and successfully qualified as the first UAS in Hong Kong. We have set aside a startup fund of one hundred million dollars to support the formation of the Alliance of UAS and to support joint promotional activities of the Alliance in the next five to ten years, to instill in students, parents, and the community better appreciation of the importance of VPATs, providing additional subsidies for full-time students pursuing designated applied degree programs under the study subsidy scheme for designated professions or sectors, to encourage institutions to offer more applied degree programs and to enhance enrollment incentive. Three, supporting the Vocational Training Council, VTC, to further strengthen its efforts on VPATs, including extending the pilot incentive scheme to employers under the Training and Support Scheme, as well as the pilot subsidy scheme for students of professionals' part-time programs for five years. Further, supporting student exchange activities enhancing support for students with special educational needs, encouraging employers to provide workplace learning and strengthening the promotion of VPATs. Four, gradually increasing the quota of the Hong Kong PhD Fellowship Scheme from three hundred to four hundred places per academic year to attract more outstanding talents to study and conduct research in Hong Kong. For students' physical and psychological well-being, the Education Bureau provides each publicly-funded primary and secondary school and their parent teachers associations the one-off grants for mental health at school of sixty thousand dollars and one-off grants for mental health of parents and students of twenty thousand dollars to help schools organize related programs or procure related services or materials for promoting mental health of students, teachers, and parents in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four and twenty-five school years. We launched mental health literacy resource packages for students at different learning stages and phases, starting from the two thousand twenty-three and four school year, so as to facilitate the school in promoting mental health literacy in class, thereby strengthening students' awareness of mental health. We also provide a series of intensive workshops for teachers and school garden personnel to enhance their knowledge and skills in caring for students with mental health needs. For supporting students with special educational needs, the EDB enhances the existing staff provision of resource teachers for students comorbid with autism spectrum disorder in primary and secondary schools of eight special schools and extended to schools for social development, starting from the two thousand twenty-four and five school year. For primary and secondary education, the EDB launches a five-year Greater Bay Area Career Exploration Tours program, starting from the last school year, with a view to deepening senior secondary students' understanding of the latest developments of various industries in the Greater Bay Area through personal observation experience. The program will provide around seven hundred tour quotas for public sector schools, including special schools and direct subsidy scheme schools operating senior secondary curriculum from this year onwards. Together with the mainland exchange programs provided for primary and secondary students on a regular basis on mainland study tours for the senior secondary subjects of citizenship and social development implemented since the two years ago, students will have ample opportunities to visit the mainland and gain a firsthand understanding of our country's achievements. In addition, we implement the subjects on science in primary schools starting from the two thousand twenty-five and six school year with a view to strengthening students' scientific and creative thinking. The final version of the curriculum framework was announced this March. We also provide a one-off grant of three hundred fifty thousand dollars for each publicly-funded primary school to kickstart the subject. Upon acting legislation for safeguarding national security, Article twenty-three by the government, we will build upon our foundation, step up the support for schools to integrate relevant topics into learning and teaching, with a view to enhancing students' awareness of safeguarding national unity and ethnic solidarity, as well as maintaining the security, sovereignty, and development interests of the nation. For kindergarten education, we increase the one-off provision of the grants for promotion of Chinese arts and culture to enable kindergartens to organize more school-based activities of Chinese culture to further enhance students' understanding of traditional Chinese culture, cultivate their national identity, sense of belonging, and nurture their love to our country. We also increase the one-off provision of the professional capacity enhancement grants with expanded usage script to further strengthen the capacity and professional development of kindergarten teachers, including arranging exchange activities or sharing of good practices with kindergartens on the mainland to foster collaboration among kindergartens and enhancing the quality of kindergarten education. In the coming year, echoing the strategy of invigorating the country through science and education, we will build on our achievements and consolidate our experiences to proactively take forward the work on various fronts in order to contribute to the country and at the same time tell good stories of Hong Kong's education. That concludes my opening remarks. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Choi. I will give each member four minutes. I think that will suffice. All members will be able to speak. Mr. Asian Ho, thank you, Chairman. My question is on EDB zero five zero. That's my own question. I'm pleased to see that the drop off, the drop off rates of native-speaking English teachers in secondary schools has come, has climbed down in the past school year. At the present time, at present, we don't see a shortage of manpower in native-speaking English teacher. So what is the number of new native-speaking English teachers hired this year? Now about the budget on hiring native-speaking English teachers of primary school, the increase is four point one percent, for secondary school is eight point six percent. So what is this increase about? Compared between secondary schools and primary schools, the increase was seven point one percent and seven point seven seven percent. The level of increase were similar. So why is it so? Three questions, Dr. Choi. Thank you, concerning the NET scheme, that is the Native Speaking English Teacher Scheme, and the specific number of native-speaking English teachers. I will seek my colleagues' help. Now, we do have sufficient native-speaking English teachers in our schools. The wait stage rate is within the normal range. In terms of resources or spending of primary and secondary schools, we do see an increase in per head cost. In primary and secondary schools, we have enhanced the teacher-to-class ratio and also sped up the implementation of small-class teaching in primary schools. So that translates into an increase in the recurrence expenditure. Now, the recurrence expenditure on education accounts for ninety-two point three percent among all recurrence expenditure. So that has included the increase in salaries. I seek my team's help on the other two questions.
Permanent Secretary. Let me give you the broad picture and then I will allow my colleagues to give you some figures. As mentioned by Mr. Ho, you see the attrition rate has come down significantly. There is no shortage of N E Ts. And in fact, the recruitment exercise has been a success. So the recruitment figures have actually gone up on overall expenditure. Again, you will see that the level remains stable. Apart from salaries cost, we also need to provide for special allowance and other incentives to retain them. So on top of the basic salary, we also add to the expenditure other allowances. So that accounts for the increase in the expenditure in secondary schools. Despite the increase recorded, it is not in real terms a significant rise because of salary adjustment, et cetera. Next, Ms. So, Deputy Secretary would like to supplement as well. In two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, let me quote you some figures. The number of net teachers in primary schools, well, in primary schools, there were four hundred and sixty-four and secondary schools, three hundred and seventy-three. All right, thank you. Next, Dr. Tichyun. Thank you, Chairman.
I'd like to follow up on reply number EDB one seven seven in relation to the mental health of students. According to government figures in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, one hundred and fifty primary students suffered from mental illness and four hundred and fifty secondary school students suffered from mental illness. In two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, for primary, three hundred and seventy students, and in secondary, one thousand six hundred and ten students suffered from mental illnesses. So that means the figure has gone up by one time and a half for primary schools and two point five times for secondary schools. This is worrying. For resources in the past five years, the allocation has gone up by thirty percent. So it seems that these two are not proportionate. Now, we shouldn't just focus on hard figures. It's not about letting children learn English well. It's a matter of life and death when it comes to student suicides. Thirty-two students committed suicide last year, and that's a five-year record high. Secretary, is there something wrong with our education system? Because we see a rising trend. Shouldn't we pull all efforts and resources in the education sector to tackle the issue of student mental health problems? I appeal to the government to do, to do something about it. The government should also mobilize parents, schools, students to work towards the goal so that we have a good environment for the students. Now, let me show you this. On mental health support, we should have multi-tiers of support. The first tier is to have a mental health surveys. We should be able to identify problematic students as quickly as possible. And we also have a three-tier intervention model. And I really appreciate this model. We know that it means that at the level of schools, community, and healthcare system, we should identify needy students as early as possible. We also have the four hours mental health charter, and I appreciate this initiative as well. We encourage schools to, on a long-term basis, commit to preventive education. Now, we should finally return to the, I mean, honor the original intention of having full-time learning. By full-time learning, students should complete their home aside, I mean, complete the school assignments at school so that when they go home, they can enjoy their time with the family. We need to revise the support structure to promote mental well-being. So, Secretary, in the coming year, will you step up efforts in these regards? Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. Let me respond to the members' questions in relation to the resources available and identification of students with mental health needs. With enhanced awareness of mental health, as well as the survey being incorporated as part of our integrated education, we now have a better awareness of mental health needs of students. There is also a broader definition of mental health issues. That accounts for the increase in figures. And in the past few years, not only Hong Kong, but the whole world was affected by COVID-nineteen pandemic. And that also put more pressure on all sectors of the community, including students. Post-COVID, students face more pressure at school. Of course, we cannot just dish out money to increase resources in order to tackle the problem. During a child's development, they may face different challenges and they may have different mental health needs. We need the participation of different stakeholders, including schools, parents, as well as experts of different disciplines. Dr. Tich mentioned the four hours and the three-tier intervention model. In fact, we provide holistic support under this approach. At the same time, we want to help students build resilience as well as improve interpersonal relationships so that we build a good safety net. The Education Bureau and the education sector have been sparing no effort in this regard. I'd like to thank teachers for their great effort in safeguarding the mental well-being of students. Next, Mr. Tommy Jiang. Thank you. My question is on reply zero number EDB oh two five about the Chinese Culinary Institute and the International Culinary Institute of the VTC. In the last century, I talked to the government about resource allocation for some programs relating to to Chinese cuisine, and that's a hundred-million-dollar startup fund. And that resulted in the Chinese Culinary Institute. For the first three years, students who graduated from this institute could get a job. So we achieved one hundred percent employment rate. Since then, I haven't heard of students not being able to find a job. But a decade down the road, I've been told by the management of the CCI that many students are reluctant to take up a job because they are on the PRH waiting list. If they get a job with a pay above nineteen thousand dollars, then they will have to, you know, give up the job in order to get a public housing offer. I'm looking at figures in the year two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. These were times when we were still in the COVID-nineteen pandemic and some restaurants were closed. And yet, some seventy percent of graduates were able to find jobs in the industries. So do we have the figures relating to the employment situation post-COVID? Is it still on the low side? Because I wonder if it has to do with their reluctance to take up a job or is it that it's really difficult for them to find a job? Because if it's the latter, I'm more than willing to help them find a job in the industries. So let's see who will take my question, Secretary. I'll give the floor to the VTC to supplement, but let me make a start. In relation to the Chinese Culinary Institute and International Culinary Institute, they both enjoy very good reputation. So I will now give the floor to the VTC to explain the employment figures and see if Dr. Um has some previous figures as well. Before two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one, I'm afraid I don't have the figure at hand. Can you give me this information after the meeting? All right, thank you. All right, I still have some time left. So a follow-up question, please. Mr. Yang Kun-Yet. He runs a trust or a foundation, and he gives donation to the CCI. And I also participated in his, in the ceremony hosted by Yang Kun-Yet. Through that fund, I'd like to help raise funds so that every year, we can reserve two or three places for needy students to study in these institutes. You should at least set aside two or three places, and we will help pay the fees. There may be students who are not adequately, I mean, who are not in your view qualified, but then they may be very poor. They may be living in partitioned rooms, subdivided units. Perhaps we can help the underprivileged, like the non-ethnic Chinese students. Right, please go back and give it a thought. Next, Dr. Chairman Huang. Thank you, Chairman. Two questions. EDB oh three three, that's a question that I submitted. One hundred million dollars will be set up, will be provided for the, for an alliance of the UAS to be set up. At the moment, there are only two or three institutions which I think will be qualified to become a university of applied science. So in other words, there would at most be three such institutions. And according to the answer, the startup fund will be used to support the joint promotion of the Alliance for the next five to ten years. Now, if it's one hundred million dollars spread across ten years to be shared by two or three institutions, I don't know whether this is a sufficient sum. And do you have targets in mind so as to promote UAS? The second question is EDB one nine seven. Well, it's actually a discovery. Now, I need to declare my interest. I am the council member of two self-financing institutions and also a member of UGC management. I am so-called the execution as well as the supervision personnel. And I understand that the reserves kept by the eight universities reach one hundred and twenty-six billion dollars. That's one-seventh of the government reserves. I think the administration should carefully consider how the reserves should be put to good use. Say, if you, if we want to develop Hong Kong into an international education hub, maybe you should use some of the reserves or income of the eight universities to support your initiative. My next question is this. Sometimes there may be conversion projects or redevelopment projects of UGC-funded universities. Instead of going after the Education Bureau for funding, maybe they should use their reserves as well. For Hong Kong U, thirty-seven point one billion dollars and CUHK, thirty-two point three dollars. And then for some other universities, up to ten billion dollars. That's the amount of reserves they have. So I'd say that they are quite well endowed. Two questions, Secretary. The first question on the alliance of the UAS. The institution should first be qualified as a private university before applying for accreditation as a UAS. So at the, I mean, the institution can apply for qualification as a private university as well as a UAS. There is no conflict. And the alliance is just the beginning. We will conduct a review and consider whether additional resources are required. That means in relation to the alliance promotion of UAS and industry-institution collaboration, grooming talents to support the sectors where manpower demands are most keen, we will consider all these objectives before mapping our way forward. As for the reserves for the eight UGC-funded universities, part of the reserves will be used as seed money to support other projects. We consider the universities using these resources in an optimal manner. Most importantly, the resources should be used to promote sustainable development or R and D in these institutions, which can help us maintain an edge in eight centers of Hong Kong. And they should also manage the finances having regard to the actual circumstances. Mr. Dennis Wang. Let me follow up on my questions, one oh seven and one one one. In one oh seven, my question is on the VTC. It is the VTC's objective to groom talents for different sectors to support Hong Kong's development. However, in terms of their career choice, it should tally with the courses that they have taken. But from your paper, I see that, starting from two thousand eighteen, the, for three cohorts, the highest rate of grad, percentage of graduates actually falls in the Diploma of Foundation Studies. But the number of, I mean, the percentage of graduates securing employment related to the programs is still on the low side. It's actually just around fifty percent. It's been three years. Has the VTC reviewed the cost structure? Because in promoting UAS and VPAT in the future, this may be counterintuitive towards boosting the confidence in VPAT among students and parents. I understand, the next question is that I understand that you're going to roll out the Mental Health Charter in due course. In two thousand twenty, twenty-one, the administration introduced the scheme. Two social workers will be attached to one school under this initiative, despite having two social workers. I think that more should be done to look after the students. So is there any groundbreaking initiative to help address the emotional or mental health issues among students for the sake of youth development, Secretary? Two questions. First, in relation to the graduates of Diploma of Foundation Studies, why is it that not many graduates secured employment relating to the program they studied? Well, basically, this diploma is packed to QF three, level three of the qualifications framework. That's an elementary level. So students tend to further their studies or move on to the VPAT pathway. So that's more or less what I gather. See if my colleague has anything to supplement. About student mental health, as I said, we attach great importance to this issue. We must not rely on a single profession to address the issue. We do have more social workers in schools. We also collaborate with different sectors. Apart from social workers, we need to give play to the work of different professionals. We also need a joint effort to promote mental health among students. And we'll also proceed with the four-hour initiative. See if the VTC would like to supplement. Thank you. For Diploma of Foundation Studies, over eighty percent of students progress to the high diploma courses. So not many graduates immediately took up employment. As is QF level three, many of them would further their studies before joining the workforce. That accounts for the low percentage here.
Mr. Roxton. Thank you. My two own questions, zero, three, four. So that is the excellent scholarship scheme. Every year, one hundred students would be awarded the scholarship, but they have to pledge to come back to Hong Kong to work for at least two years after graduation. So one-third of the awardees would, for various reasons, request the request the government to waive the requirements or defer the arrangements. These are all top talents. I understand the grounds may be valid, but it is a loss for Hong Kong if they are not coming back to Hong Kong to work. So how can we ensure that the awardees of this scholarship would come back to work for at least two years in Hong Kong? They can leave afterwards if they want, but they should come back first. Now, zero one nine. Like other members said, we see a rising trend of student suicide. Now, we have a three-tier emergency mechanism to prevent that. Now, can we allocate more resources to develop an anonymous reporting application so that students can tip off the teachers on bullying cases anonymously? Many a times, students commit suicide because of bullying at school. Now, with this anonymous tipping-off mechanism, we can ensure that these bullying cases can be followed up with immediately by so- by school social workers. Secretary, thank you. Concerning the government scholarship scheme, if I remember correctly, over the years, only twenty-five of the awardees would pay the government back after getting the scholarship. Many of these students study in highly sought-after disciplines, so they, so they would pursue further education and then they would come back to Hong Kong to work. And the period is commensurate with the number of years they spent studying under the scholarship. Concerning the anonymous tipping-off app for bullying victims, now we have a very clear guidelines to deal with bullying cases at schools. So we will deal with each and every case seriously, whether the report was made anonymously or not. We adopted zero tolerance attitude against bullying cases. Most importantly, we have to educate the bystanders to make a report and stop the cases from ongoing. Next, Professor Lau Chi Pang.
Thank you. My own question, E D B zero eight seven. Developments of universities of applied science. According to the reply, the governments would offer financial and policy supports. Now, there is a one hundred million dollar startup fund. It would go to the Metropolitan University so that it would take charge of the university, uh of the alliance of U A S. So the one hundred million dollar startup fund would be used to support education and publicity work for the next five to ten years. Now, to be qualified as a U A S, you need to be qualified as a university first. Now, for those who are yet to secure a university accreditation, there's still a very long way to go. So would you like to involve these post-secondary institutions in the alliance as well or would you ask them to stop trying? This is a time when we are trying to develop Hong Kong into an international education hub. So I think U A S or the alliance for U A S is a very important measure. So with the startup fund, what is the next step? You said there would be more exchange with the universities of applied science in the mainland, but it seems there are only one or two such partners. Doctor, Doctor Choi. Let me talk about the policy direction on the implementation details. I will invite the P A S to supplement. Concerning U A S, this is a measure to promote the status of V P A's in society and amongst parents. This is a new track approach with equal focus on conventional academic pursuits and professional training. Concerning the Hong Kong Metropolitan University, it will act as the secretariat for the alliance of U A S. A committee will be set up for steering the relevant work. On encouraging non uh on involving educational institutions which are not U A S to join, I will invite the P A S to speak. The one hundred million dollars will be used for supporting the entire development, the entitlements of the entire alliance, not just the Hong Kong Metropolitan University. It is just the secretariat. A committee will be set up under the Education Bureau to steer and fast the use of the startup fund. The goal is to foster synergy between members of the alliance. Now, in terms of education and publicity and also top-tier international conferences, uh we are going to collaborate with alliance of U A S in, say, Switzerland and Germany as well as those in the mainland so as to foster the developments of U A S in Hong Kong. Now, we seek to promote the development of V P A's education at um qualification framework level seven or above.
Mister Ji Guoqiang, thank you. My question is about um reply, reply zero four, zero and four T one. Concerning the structural decline in school age population. Now, for the next few years, we will see a serious decrease in the number of primary school students. Now, in two thousand twenty-eight, there will be less than forty thousand students. Two thousand twenty-nine, just thirty-one thousand five hundred. So the decrease is some thirty-six point nine percent compared with the previous years. Now, given the acute drop in the number of primary school students, if the situation persists, we would need to close a lot of schools. So how many primary schools will be closed because of insufficient number of students? Now, would you ask schools to reduce the number of classes from five to four and also request direct subsidy schools and to do the same? Now, for secondary schools, um next year, the number of uh new students for Form one and Form, for Form one will be some eighty, uh fifty-four thousand three hundred students. So a serious decrease. Now, there were some schools which closed down without any prior notice. This jeopardize the students' benefits. Now, for public schools, why are you allowing these school sponsoring bodies to make the decision so rashly?
Sec- uh secretary, concerning the decrease in the number of primary one students and the number of classes to be reduced, we need to study the picture year by year on year. Now, the number of classes in various districts is different. Now, we are implementing small class teaching in schools over the territory. The implementation rate is now some ninety percent. We understand that there is, there is a structural decline in school age population, but we are trying to minimize the impact on schools. We have been talking with these school sponsoring bodies. By year two thousand twenty-nine, in a certain district or a certain school, we, there may be a risk of insufficient admission. Then we will work with these school sponsoring bodies to make plans in advance, for example, integration, merging of schools or other options. Now, for, to meet the educational needs in new districts, we are relocating some schools to meet the demand rather than building new schools. So I, so we have done a lot to stabilize the situation. For secondary school, the N plus three school year transitional arrangement. So that is our practice. When a school is impacted by the decline in s- school age population and need to close down, we would work with the school sponsoring bodies to ride out the storm. But if the number is really insufficient, keeping the school open may jeopardize the interests of students. So we are offering different options to these school sponsoring bodies and parents to find the best option. Now, would you ask all five-class schools to reduce the class number to four? Well, this is a transitional issue rather than a structural issue. We would look at the scale of each school so that in terms of social development and academic pursuit, which is the best for these students. The size of the teaching force is also an important consideration. Mister Ju, your final word? Now, if a large number of primary and secondary schools close down, it would affect about, affect upon the diversity of the school's ecosystem. So we need to think deep and hard about this issue and find possible solution. So I think the secretary has taken note of your view. Last word, sec- um Chairman. The number of schools is not directly related to the quality of our education system. Thank you.
Miss Conny Lam, thank you, Chairman. I support the four-hour mental health charter. Now, we have talked about the four hours for many years. Now, Doctor Choi has been working in the education sector for very long, so you must understand that. Now, I would like to talk about the mental health issues for primary and secondary students. Now, for public secondary schools, if you look at the number of students with mental health issue, over the past five years, the number has increased twofold. Now, in year two thousand eighteen and nineteen, there were six hundred. In two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, the number increased to not one thousand nine hundred eighty. Just last year, our, the number of student suicide was a record high. Now, starting April this year, we have seen twenty-three youth suicide cases already. The number is, uh the reason is multifold. Now, if you look at the past five months, the number of educational psychologists under the Education Bureau has decreased. So would that affect the support given to students? Educational psychologists and clinical psychologists need to cover many schools. So are you going to allocate more resources to increase the manpower? And can the secretary promise that there will be sufficient resource, teachers, social workers and psychologists to support our students? The problems faced by students are not the problems themselves. They have no problem. The problems come from their indigenous families. Now, sometimes the issue would pass down for three generations. Grandfather, father and mother and grandparents or even grand-grandparents would have a role to play in students' mental health. So like Doctor Take Chiu Yuen and Miss Dorin Kong, the three of us signed a joint letter to urge the Health Bureau and the Education Bureau to face this issue head-on. Doctor Choi, I know you love our students. I hope you would give more thoughts on fostering collaboration between schools and parents as well as the Health Bureau and also the Labor and Welfare Bureau. Since we have so many student suicide cases, can we ask the care teams to help as well?
Let me repeat. If you want to ask follow-up questions at the special finance committee meetings, please limit yourselves to questions relating to the estimates. If it's a policy issue, please ask that question at the panel meeting. Anyway, a response from you, Secretary. About the first question about the rise in figures relating to students with mental health needs. As I explained, it has to do with a broader definition, higher awareness as well as the uh impact of COVID nineteen at the macro level. About the number of school educational psychologists, the number has been on the rise. It has gone up from one hundred and sixty-one to two hundred. Despite recruitment difficulties, the number of psychologists have actually increased. We need to work on positive values education for students to build their resilience. For parents, for, as I mentioned, regarding homeschool cooperation, we are offering additional grant for schools to promote mental health so that with a joint effort, we can help tackle the issue. Next, Mister Lam Chen Sing.
Thank you, Chairman. Reply number E D B O seven five. That's a reply to my question. After two years since the launch of the pilot project, there are now two uh programs. The enrollment situation has been quite good in some courses but not in others. Say, for gerontology, last year, um you, they only managed to recruit, you know, enroll a few students. In the short term, will there be a review on, say, the publicity strategy and the course curriculum? And two or three years down the road, would there be another major survey? So that we can gauge the pay level of graduates and then phase out programs that are not popular or not running well. Next, according to the budget speech, one hundred million dollars will be set aside to promote the setting up of an alliance of U A S. Earlier, I spoke on this issue. I gave my support. I agree with the setting up of a university of applied science, but I have reservations. The book is now in the red and in fact, there is a two-billion-dollar fund. In fact, the Quality Education Fund was used to promote vocational education. So perhaps the expenses should come under the Q E F. And in fact, there are existing resources available for the promotion. We don't need to provide for separate um allocation for publicity because even for the A R Supercomputing Center, they are only spending forty-four million dollars for promotion and grooming talents. Secretary. About the enrollment of the eight applied courses, enrollment hinges on a number of factors such as other choices available, the prospect of certain sectors, the appeal of these sectors. We review the courses in light of the actual circumstances and we also review in light of the actual circumstances, and we also review the relevant courses uh in light of the manpower demand. As you can see, there are different applied degree programs. They come of very different nature in order to meet the manpower demand. As for the UAS, we already explained the one hundred million dollars fund for the alliance. In fact, it's not just to be used by one single institution, it's to be used by a cluster of institutions. So that a focused effort can be made to promote UAS. Indeed, we have other funds available to support the initiative and to promote Hong Kong as an international education hub. We take this two-prong approach. Next, Mister Tong Lee Chee.
Thank you, Chairman. EDB O one six and O four six, I have two questions stemming from these two. For EDB O one six, it sets out at the level of kindergartens, primary, secondary schools, the changes in the number of students emitted. And then in table two, you have a list of figures relating to NCS students. I see that the level of NCS students by school level are quite stable. Whereas overall speaking, the total number of students have been on the decline at all levels, in particular at the level of kindergarten. So my question is whether the administration has a targeted strategy to help NCS students learn Chinese so that they um provide impetus to our workforce? The other question is on O four six. Now about uh the subsidy scheme, the relevant sub-degree programs. I see a gap between the actual intake and the number of subsidized places. The number of subsidized places far exceeds that of actual intakes. Have you looked into the situation? For example, for the construction industry, has it to do with your publicity strategy? Because there is always a demand in the market. We see these institutions listed in the table. But I wonder if the programs run by them are accredited by the relevant professional institutions? Is it the reason why some students are deterred from taking these courses? Two questions. First, on helping NCS students learn Chinese. In fact, the number of increase in NCS students far exceed the rate of growth of local students in number. Because uh indeed, each NCS family tends to have more NCS children. We have some twenty thousand plus NCS children each year. In terms of resources to support NCS students learn Chinese, we have increased the provision from two hundred and twenty million to six hundred and seventy million dollars. So that's quite a jump. We are providing an additional amount of six hundred and seventy million dollars to help twenty thousand plus NCS students starting from the kindergarten's level. And we provide one hundred and fifty thousand to one point five million dollars of additional grant to uh primary schools taking in NCS students. There would be additional subsidies per head. Um for the additional needs arising from taking in NCS students, some four hundred schools are able to get this grant. On top of that, the Education Bureau also develops online learning kits, live planning uh materials for them. We are, on a continuous basis, review the effectiveness and consider how we can better cater for the needs. About the second question, I think that the member was referring to the applied degree of applied course, um, applied courses. Well, we provide the number of subsidized places on the basis of manpower projection in that particular sector. But students after all will need to meet certain qualifications requirement during enrollment. As you put it, these courses will need to comply with the accreditation requirement of the institutions as well. So for some students who qualify for the programs, they may not choose them in the end. Um all in all, to address a mismatch, we will step up publicity and review these courses. Mister Yopak Lam?
I'd like to ask a follow-up question on que- uh EDB one eight nine. The Education Bureau attaches great importance to running mainland exchange programs for students. According to your reply, in twenty twenty, I mean, since twenty twenty-two, when the COVID nineteen pandemic ended, the number of students participating in mainland exchange programs has resumed the normal level. And for the students taking CS subjects, citizenship and social development subjects, they are required to go on mainland exchange as well. So in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, over hundred thousand and twenty thousand students have visited the mainland for exchange. That is a good deed. We should encourage more such exchanges. For expenditure per capita is one thousand and eighty-four dollars. For the CS subject exchange tour is one thousand seven hundred, uh, one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. In twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, the subsidy per head for CS su- subject students, there will be a substantial increase. Uh it will go up to two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So I see more resources put into foster exchange. Now, Secretary, I'm sure you know my sector's concern. We want to run quality exchange programs for the students' sake. And we met with the um administration many times. We talked about problems with tenders, with payments. There are problems. And the new travel agents are unable to take, uh, to um operate these mainland exchange activities because of the tender requirements. Uh mostly, the bigger a- uh agencies would win the contracts. I need to declare that I also operate a um a- an agency. Anyway, my question is, uh, would there be room to adjust or revise the tendering process to encourage more TAs to take part in it without compromising quality? And that schools can engage licensed TAs to help promote exchange activities for schools? Secretary, for mainland exchange activities for students, such as the one for senior secondary students taking the CS subject, we give quality the top priority. Of course, we need the support of the tourism industry. We also need the support of different local governments in the mainland. And the education sector also attaches high importance to this matter. So we need the joint effort of stakeholders to make sure that these are quality programs. We need to exercise fiscal prudence. And on this premise, we should keep all options open so that more quality travel agents will be able to participate in this uh work. So this is something we can do without compromising fiscal prudence.
Miss Lillian Kwok, thank you, Chairman. Reply zero six six. Now, if you look at Steve Fager, in two year two thousand nineteen to twenty, we spent one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to sponsor some twelve activities for one thousand sixty-five participants. Now, in year two thousand, two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two and three, uh, we spent three point eight six million dollars to sponsor two thousand eight hundred and nine participants in sixty-six activities. The previous year, two point five five million dollars on sixty activities for three thousand seven hundred twenty-six people. Now, since two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the expenditure has increased twenty-folds. But in terms of the number of participants, it is just three times higher. So it seems the CP value is low. If you look at um reply zero one nine on the students' mental health, I have been drawing on the importance of students' mental health. So there are three levels. Universal, selective, and indicator levels. Now, for universal, it is mainly a preventive approach. Now, the three tier among the three tiers, universal is only tier one. Now, for indicator levels, that's tier three. But we lack tier two, that is help at school. So in the future, is the Education Bureau going to pluck the gap at school so that a tier two can be added to link up tier one and three? Now, one seven six. Now, this is, this is about support for preschool special education. I don't see a lot of measures on this aspect. Now, we are talking about integrated education in mainstream school, so we would deploy a teacher to shadow the students. This is the most effective method recognized internationally. So can we attach more manpower to preschool educational institutions so that there can be a shadow teacher for students with special needs? And we don't have a statistic on the number of sand students in kindergarten. Three questions, Doctor? Thank you, concerning the high expenditure on PTA activities, but less, uh, but not a lot of increase in the number of participants. Now, we have announced the Parents' Education Curriculum Framework over the past two years. In the past, we were conducting seminars with a large number of participants. But now we are not counting those seminars. We mainly take tally of parents' education courses, that is thematic workshops. On students' mental health, support the three-tier framework, universal, selective, and indicator levels. Now, that is the recommendation made by the report of the Committee on Prevention of Student Suicide. That is a very targeted local study. Very clear measures were suggested. For example, tier, tier one, a nurturing positive values at school, tier two, selective support for students in need, and tier three, professional support for students at risk. So this is not something that we invented. That is the recommendation made by the Committee on Homeschool Cooperation. On your third question, why there is not a specific set of statistics for sand students at kindergarten? Now, we adopt the first, support first and assessments later approach. Now, for students with apparent impairments, we can identify them very quickly. Now, for students with ADHD and autistic spectrum disorder, we shouldn't label these students at so early age. We should observe the students for longer. So besides the apparent impairments I mentioned, at the kindergarten level, we avoid labeling these students. However, if we observe late developments and other issues, we would provide a preschool assessment for students so as to refer them when there are suspicions. Thank you. Uh, the answer is very uh, the, you have answered all the questions already. Professor William Wong, thank you. Uh, reply one eight one. Universities of Applied Science. The government would promote collaboration between our UAS with other UAS in the mainland and the world. So have we identified overseas universities of applied science with a potential uh for collaboration? And also how much funding would be allocated? Now, one eight eight, another question about UAS. UAS is supposed to help Hong Kong to become an international INT hub. Now, self-financing post-secondary institution can apply for the status of UAS. After all, the funding is less than those received by UGC universities. And usually, parents and students would attach lower status to self-financing post-secondary educational institutions. So would the governments involve these institutions in setting up the alliance? Reply one H two. Now, the government is going to introduce legislative amendments to cap three two zero. That is the post-secondary colleges ordinance. So that the self-financing arms of community of committee fund, of UGC-funded universities can be included as well. Now, for the non-maintain test subsidy scheme for self-financing undergraduate studies in Hong Kong, for students who fail to apply for subsidy under this scheme, before the introduction of the legislative amendments, will the governments provide other mi- other non-maintain test subsidy for those students at present? Secretary, on the first question, the Alliance for UAS, I would invite the permanent secretary to answer. Concerning whether publicly subsidized universities are also, can also be qualified as Q, as UAS? Yes, they can. But we have very clear positions, positionings for the age universities under the UGC. So it's an issue of priority. Concerning the legislative amendments to cap three two zero, it is listed in the, it is listed on the legislative program in the second half of the year. Concerning support for students in self-financing educational institutions, we have various subsidies and allowances for them. So the mechanism is a bit different from UGC universities. Miss Michelle Lee, thank you, Chairman. Work has started on establishing the Alliance for UAS. A committee will be set up. Meeting will be held soon to formulate a work plan. We are already reaching out to overseas UAS. There are going to be international conferences on UAS collaboration. We have taken those opportunities to meet with representatives. We have taken those opportunities to meet with representatives from those UAS. And we are targeting UAS in the Scandinavian countries and also in Europe, for example, Germany, to foster the collaboration of an alliance. Same for the mainland. Thank you. Doctor Wendy Hong, thank you, Chairman. My question is on my own written question. Two zero two and two zero three. Now, education expenditure is among the top three items of expenditure of the government, so I'm concerned about cost control. Now amongst the degree programs of the eight UGC universities, the non-local students, non-local students account for some nineteen point nine percent of the students. Now we are going to expand the eligibility more. Now we are charging the extra additional cost per head for these non-local students. Now what is the difference between this cost and the per capita average cost? Now would you consider charging the, the non-local students according to the total cost? Secretary, now we are now the, under the current arrangements, the fee for non-local students ranged from one hundred fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. That is at a similar level with our neighbors. If we are charging under the total cost, including all the fees for utilities and so on, it would add significantly to the tuition fee for non-local students. It would also undermine our attractiveness for talent, so we need to strike a balance. Publicly funded universities will not subsidize non-local students, but we will offer education to them on a cost-recovery basis. Concerning the fees for fixed, uh, for infrastructure of the universities, that is the fixed cost, they would not be transferred on to the non-local students. Can you tell me the difference between the cost per head and the total cost? Secretary. In two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the per head cost is some two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So for some courses, um, they are laboratory-based, some not. So the range I gave you, one hundred fifty thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's still within range. So universities are charging the non-local students according to their own situations. Next, Ms. Rebecca Chan. Thank you. My own question, zero zero seven. Sorry, zero zero six and also zero zero seven. Some members have also asked this. I'm concerned about the mental health of our students. The dropout rate of educational psychologists is worrying. In two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and twelve, and then the next year sixteen, the total number of educational psychologists has decreased from ninety-two to seventy-nine. What's the reason? This may be a policy issue, but what is the remuneration package? Should we consider adjusting the remuneration package to retain them? And also, it seems you have a very hard time recruiting new recruits. In two thousand, two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, only seventeen, and last year, just three. Now this is very worrying. We have a high attrition rate and the number of new recruits is low. So can we adjust the remuneration package so that it becomes more attractive, or is it because of other reason that they choose to leave? Reply zero zero seven. The establishment of educational psycholo- psychology service in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, one hundred seventy, uh, one hundred eighty-one in two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, one hundred eighty-six, but the expenditure has climbed down a bit. That's very curious. Is it because you have hired more junior educational psychologists? That's why the pay is lower? Or is it because of a change in the terms of employment? Now, under the revised estimate, the expenditure has risen up again, so I wonder why. And also the number of students with mental health problems. In five years' time, the number of such secondary students has doubled. So we know the scope has become much broader compared with before. But are we allocating more resources to help them besides how students' education are also affected by their mental illness?
Three questions, Secretary. I would take the first question on supporting students with mental health needs. And then on educational psychologists, the establishment, the estimates. My colleague in charge of the relevant portfolio can give you an account later. About support for student students with mental health needs, we take a whole-school approach. That means additional allocation we set aside to support students with special educational needs. So we considered the grant per head. We also develop different education resources to help teachers in order to help students. My third point is, we also provide training for parents, teachers alike to enhance teachers' capability in handling these cases. Because after all, teachers come into contact with students for long periods of time. The fourth point is that we also work on parent education to provide holistic support. We also have cross-sectoral multidisciplinary support for uh, students with mental health needs. We also put in place a three-tier intervention model. To take your question on manpower, educational psychologists come under either the Education Bureau or the Department of Health. For, well, it's difficult to recruit educational psychologists, um, stationed at the Education Bureau because they are in charge of overseeing the work of education psychologists in schools. Now, to answer your question on increasing head count but a drop in the expenditure, it has to do with the rank of the EPs. With the same salary and conditions of service, the new recruits, um, incur less expenditure because of their respective ranks. Mr. Stanigan. I have two questions in relation to one four one and one four four. EDB one four one. About English Schools Foundation and the subsidies. According to the administration's reply, subsidies for ESF will be phased out over a span of thirteen years. It's not just a reduction, the subsidies will be phased out. Per year, there is a reduction of nineteen point two million dollars per. I don't think everyone understands why the government is subsidizing the ESF with public money, and that it will only be phased out over a long span. The ESF nowadays admits students that are not really the original target group. So please explain to us the impact on teachers as well as schools when subsidies are phased out. Now, the administration said at the, um, said outright that students already admitted to the schools will not be affected. Can you elaborate on this point? The second question is on sister schools. This is encouraged by the government. Resources are provided. According to the figures, eight hundred and thirty schools will be paired with their respective sister schools. One hundred and twenty-nine million dollars will be spent on forming ties with the sister schools. It's really valuable for money. So we're talking about several dozen or several, or tens of thousands of dollars per school. Will the government put in more resources to promote this? And how do you gauge the effectiveness? Two questions. On ESF, starting from twenty sixteen, seventeen, we will start phasing out the subsidies over a span of thirteen years. This is a long horizon because ESF has altogether thirteen grades for students. So we need to phase them out year on year. We need to make sure that students already admitted will not be affected. That means the transitional period will be one of thirteen years. For sister schools, the total expenditure is one hundred and twenty-nine point three one million dollars. So per school, they each get one hundred, uh, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of the grant. The amount is also adjusted year on year based on the CCPI. So we provide a stable stream of resources for schools to foster exchange with the sister school pairs. In fact, after the pandemic, uh, we're seeing more and more such exchange activities. Mr. Ng, you have a follow-up question. I don't think the secretary has answered the first question. It is a matter of legacy, but can you just spell it out for us? The English School Foundation is not admitting students who are children of diplomats, expatriates, et cetera. They should be the original target group. There are many international schools in Hong Kong. Why are you only subsidizing the ESF? Right, that is why we agree with the ESF in twenty sixteen, seventeen. And starting from that agreement, over a period of thirteen years, the subsidies will gradually be phased out, but students already admitted to the ESF will not be affected. So new, um, students will not get the ESF subsidy. I, uh, Mr. Luan Man Kuo, I have a question on O nine seven. In relation to students with SEN, I'd like to have information on enhanced school-based educational psychology service provided to primary and secondary schools in the public sector. Because the grant could help these schools with early intervention and assessment. And it said that would like to raise the ratio of EPs to one to four, but according to information, some educational psychologists are looking after not four schools but eight schools. So I'd like to know whether there are difficulties in increasing the manpower ratio. Is it that there is insufficient training or that the prospective EPs are reluctant to join the service? The other question is this. When schools come across special cases which should be referred to an EP, normally it can be done within two months. But as we gather from schools, these cases also require support from teachers as well as social workers. That means they help solve part of the problem before the case is referred to an EP for intervention at a deeper level. So apart from the enhanced school-based educational psychology service, is there another way to better support schools in handling cases with the participation of teachers and social workers before the cases are referred to the EPs? Secretary. Now about the enhanced school-based educational psychology service, the target is to increase the man-in ratio to one to four, and we are rolling out this initiative in light of the actual circumstances. Some schools are more familiar with the operation. For example, the schools may be operated by the same school sponsoring body and that they could share the EPs. And of course, the target is to increase the ratio to one to four. Apart from meeting the target of handling the cases in two months, the principle, um, in general is to provide support before referral. Uh, we have, um, the Student Mental Health Support Scheme and the three-tier intervention model. We also enlist the support of NGOs to help, uh, the students in need. Mr. Chan Yung. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. I ask a number of questions. I'd like to follow up on O one one and O one three. O one one. Non-Chinese-speaking students. I've received this detailed reply from the permanent secretary. Now, for the additional funding ranging from zero point one five million to one point five million dollars a year. After dispersing the funds, is there any way to assess how the funds are used? For example, would that be Chinese tuition classes? And on reply number O one three. You will take forward the mutual recognition of sub-degree level qualifications with the mainland authorities on a pilot basis. Now we have some quality institutions in the mainland that recognize the DSE qualification. If we allow mutual recognition of the, uh, qualifications, then these sub-degree holders may be able to apply for admission in mainland universities. So can you tell me how this mutual recognition will be run, uh, in the initial period? First question about how we review support for NCS students after obtaining the grant from us. This goal concern to need to implement the Chinese Language Curriculum Second Language Learning Framework. It sets out certain requirements in terms of teaching and learning, class size, et cetera. They're required to submit reports to us, and they're also required to provide information on their website to tell parents what support they give to NCS students. We also visit the schools, and if necessary, we require schools, I mean, teachers to take up professional development courses. We also have external assessment mechanism, et cetera, to review the work. About mutual recognition of qualifications, um, the member asked what the expenditure would entail. First and foremost, we will consider the qualifications in the respective places. Now, there is a big difference in the mainland. They do not have a sub-degree level qualification. So um, there will be a recognition of professional qualifications that require additional resources.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Tang Fei. Thank you, Chairman. My own question, that's reply one five three. Item E. Starting from the two thousand twenty-three and four academic year, the UGC will inject one hundred million dollars into the funding scheme for mainland and global engagement and students' learning experience. So can I have more on how On how this funding scheme will help Hong Kong become an international education hub? And then reply one seven zero. The estimated provision on the post-secondary vocational and professional education is substantially lower than the revised estimate, but the government said it is higher. Now, a one hundred million dollar startup fund has been set up to support self-financing post-secondary institutions. Please sit. Right to count this amount towards VPAT. Now, another question, reply one six four. Now, when dependents of talents come to Hong Kong, they need to sign a form, so I asked the number about the number of uh the number of form. Now, the government said there were the answer me, uh the government answered me the number, but there is not a breakdown, but I think there should be a breakdown. You don't have to tell me uh what kind of talents their parents are. I just want to know the distribution of the students who come on the, who come with their parents who are talents. Do they go to direct subsidy school or private schools or public public schools? So I want to know the breakdown, but you don't have to give me the breakdown of what kind of talents their parents are. Three questions, Secretary. On the first and third question, I will reply first on the budget for post-secondary education, I will invite the Permanent Secretary to supplement. Now concerning the UGC funding, we are mostly funding students to engage in study tours or exchanges in the mainland overseas. So this is to promote Hong Kong's young people's understanding about the Bay Area. The third question about the number of dependents of talents. Students who are dependents of the talents are qualified to enroll themselves in our local education system. So usually, we won't make a distinction on the kind of visas they hold. So we don't have such a breakdown item. We try not to label the students depending on the future needs. And if it helps with policy formulation, we may gather statistics in this regard. Now, can I advise the Permanent Secretary to talk on VPAT? A reply one five six. The reply focuses on the expenditure made by the Education Bureau on VPAT. Now, we spend more in year two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three because we made a major one-off injection of one billion dollars into the scholarship fund. So that explains the significant increase in that year. For other years, the stand, the trend was steady. Thank you. Next, Doctor Johnny Ng. Thank you. Deputy Chair. This is my own question, reply one five zero. Concerning the Education Bureau's efforts to promote national education. Now, in two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five, there are going to be some one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred students more compared with last year, two thousand more. So which provinces will these students go to? Have you assessed the efficiency and efficacy of these programs? We have been talking about INT developments in Hong Kong for many years. So can, we have more mainland exchange programs in mainland cities with more advanced INT developments? Now, under the citizenship and social development subjects, there are mainland exchange tours. Now, the new estimates is one hundred and sixty million dollars, higher than the eighty-two million dollars last year. However, for secondary students, they are going to be just forty-seven thousand eight-six hundred students, less than the fifty-two thousand last year. So per head, it would be some one thousand five hundred dollars last year, but now it is two thousand four hundred dollars. It is a fifty-four percent increase. So why is that? And also, in this year, are we going to focus more on national developments as well as modules to enhance students' national identity? Thank you. Two questions for the Secretary, both on the mainland exchange programs. Thank you. Concerning the expected one hundred thousand primary and secondary students joining the tours and also the cities involved, we have different themes, including INT, geography and history, and also other elements like environmental protection. So based on the themes, we would choose the appropriate cities as our destinations. We would also consider the receiving capacity of those cities. After each tour, we will invite students to fill in, to fill out surveys, questionnaires. Students must also give a report on their experience. Now, under this year's CS mainland exchange programs, we have fewer students joining the programs. Now, because of, because we have more mainland exchange programs at cities farther away, there would be fewer tours, but tours with longer durations. The cost is higher for those longer trips. But we think that would be very beneficial to enhance students' understanding of national developments. It would commensurate their curriculum, so we are going to spend more on them. Thank you. Next, Mister Sunny Tang. Thank you. My own question, reply one five two. It's about BPAT. Overall speaking, I thank the government for pursuing the strategic direction of establishing universities of applied science. This will be very helpful to meet the advanced manufacturing industries talents need. With these UAS, we are going to be able to nurture talents for various segments of the supply chain, other than just top scientists. But I think there are a lot of mismatches. Sometimes we have a lot of degree programs for some topics. For some other topics, because of the shortage of teaching talents as well as shortage of laboratory spaces, there aren't lots of degree programs for those disciplines. So we are worried that in the future, we may have a shortage of talents on some disciplines, but an oversupply of talents on some other disciplines. So maybe all the post-secondary educational institutions should be coordinated by the Education Bureau in their pursuits. We don't want to waste social resources. We don't want any UAS to suffer a loss or have insufficient enrollment. That's what we have seen in the past. So may I seek a reply from the Secretary? Thank you, Secretary. Coordination on resources. Thank you. That is what we are doing now. Well, we have launched two rounds of applied degree programs, four programs for each tranche. We do encourage institutions to pursue disciplines that they have advantages in. Now, for self-financing institutions, the scale is smaller, so we hope that they can focus their resources on the disciplines that they are good at. So in developing applied science programs and the pursuit to the UAS status, we hope that educational institutions would focus on what they are doing best. And we are also subsidizing the institution, institutions to offer programs with more manpower needs. We offer loans and subsidies for them to run these courses. Next, Mister Bu Tang. Thank you. I haven't submitted any written questions on this discipline, but I would like to follow up on other replies. One five six, cross-bunchery students. We have fourteen thousand cross-bunchery students studying in our primary and secondary schools. Now, we want to facilitate customs clearance for the fourteen thousand students so that they can enjoy the study more. Now, we have the um colo, uh the um combined customs clearance or joint customs clearance model at some BCPs. So can we have that for uh cross-bunchery students? And also, is there a major difference in the number of Form Five and Form Six cross-bunchery students? Now, one nine seven, I'm sitting on the school council of the CUHK. Now, reply one nine seven. Now, the University of Hong Kong and the CUHK have a huge amounts of reserve. For CUHK, they have a thirty-two point two billion dollars in reserve. Some four hundred, some forty point five billion dollars in reserve comes from UGC funding. So they have a total of thirty-two point two billion dollars and four point five billion dollars come from UGC funding. So does, so would the government mandates the usage of this portion of their reserve? Now, second question also from Doc, from Doctor Chairman Kong. Local and non-local students in universities. Now, for non-local students, there accounts for some ten to twenty percent of students in the universities. Now, they now for CUHK um BBA uh program, there are some seven hundred twenty, seven hundred and seventy-three non-local students among the one thousand two hundred and ten students in the fac, in the faculty, sixty-three percent of them. Now, for CUHK computer um pro computer degree, among the four hundred and eighty-five students, two hundred and ten of them are non-local students, some forty-three percent. So is there a um set ratio for some disciplines?
Let me give you a very brief reply. I'll see if the UGC SG would like to supplement. First question is on cross-boundary students. After putting a halt to the type-two baby policy, there's been a drop in cross-boundary students. So as the cohort progresses, I suppose we have reached the secondary level and there aren't many um such cross-boundary primary students. I can give you the figures after the meeting if necessary. Second question about reserves in universities, as explained just now, some of the reserves may be used as a seed money to sustain the development of the university in the long run. And there may be big-ticket projects that they may wish to uh save money for uh this implementation. And we also have funds raised by the respective universities. All in all, they should optimize the use of funding, including the investments in seed money to support long-term projects and expenditure items. About the distribution of non-local students, I think the top priority is for them to consider their career aspirations and their own circumstances. They may not consider the local market circumstances, but rather their own respective markets as well as the appeal of the respective core programs. It's very difficult to ask the universities to make sure that non-local students are evenly distributed. Let's see if the UGC SG has anything to supplement. Can you, or will somebody please switch on this mic? All right, coming through. Please try again, SG. About reserves kept by UGC-funded universities, we allow the use of the reserves for the long-term development of the universities, but they come with restrictions. When there is a surplus, it would go into a fund. And usually, we put in place a three-year cycle and that uh the amount of allocation from the fund should not exceed twenty percent. But of course, there are other streams of income for these universities, such as donations, and they can be put to other uses. When it comes to development projects, new campus facilities in the universities, they are funded by the reserves. Mister Shu Hua Kang would like to go for a second round. Thank you, Chairman. I have a question on EDB oh four six about the sub, study subsidy scheme for designated professions or sectors, SSSDP. According to the administration's reply and annual review, will be conducted. Apart from the number of places and intake of self-financing programs facing under-enrollment, there are also other factors. In some courses, they only take in less than, fewer than ten students, and yet they are able to get subsidies year after year. I'd like to know the reason of under-enrollment. And if this is a long-term problem, will the administration consider excluding these programs from the SSSDP? And there is also the um a rather keen demand for some of these programs. Sometimes they need to admit more students than the number of places provided. What will the administration do about it? Because when the, because these programs will need to be accredited, and by the time they are, they may be falling behind the trend. Uh is there any way to improve the situation, Secretary? Two questions. SSSDP, that's the first question, study subsidy scheme for designated professions and sectors. We conduct reviews. We conduct reviews having regard to actual circumstances. And if it comes to our attention that there is under-enrollment for certain programs. That means they do not meet our requirement and these programs will be excluded. What was the second question again? Accreditation? Taking time, yes. We cannot compromise the quality of accreditation just to save time. In order to support a healthy and sustainable development of self-financing institutions, we need to do our gatekeeping. And that means we must not haste ourselves. And we cannot compromise the quality of programs. But of course, we'll consider without compromising the quality, how we can expedite the accreditation process. If some programs are very popular and they are taking more students than the designated places, will you provide more subsidies? Yes. Yes, we're going to exclude programs from the subsidy scheme if there is under enrollment for and vice versa, we will increase the subsidy amount for the popular programs. Next, Miss Chan Hoi Yan, second round, thank you Chairman.
I really appreciate the Bureau and the administration for taking forward our suggestion to establish the University of Applied Science. We've discussed this point and in fact, the university has applied to become a UAS. This university will roll out applied courses. The program structure will be improved gradually. I'm referring to a pilot scheme. For some popular courses such as nursing, there is over intake and for some other courses such as the course in tree management, horticulture, they only enrolled one-third of the quota. And for geront technology course, the same situation occurs. So my question is this, for these courses. There is a problem of under enrollment. But at the same time, our community needs the relevant talents. Will you consider providing incentives to attract more students such as internship opportunities, sponsorship, I mean scholarships? As well as explaining to students the career prospects, so as to give these programs a better appeal. Now, according to the fourteen-five-year plan, Hong Kong is to be developed into an East meets West center for international cultural exchange. We have art administration, cultural management and new media. Will you consider collaborating with universities to operate courses of this nature? So that we can troll for talents or groom talents. Right, so the question is on incentives, support for students, encouraging them to take up these courses. Secretary.
Yes, we'll carefully consider Miss Chan's suggestions. We'll go back and discuss with the institutions and we'd like to encourage more young people to take these programs as well. There are difficulties as mentioned. For example, a young person may be interested in abroad, abroad culture or horticulture. But this person may not be qualified for admission. So we will step up publicity and we'll also look into options for incentives. Say whether we can relax certain requirements to help aspiring students who are unable to meet the minimum qualifications requirement without compromising the quality of programs. So we will discuss with the sector and perhaps adjust the admission criteria to encourage more students to take these programs. We also need to educate students about the prospects. Now, these students are after all in their teens, they may not be familiar with the career prospects. So we'll also work on that as well, thank you. Alright, that concludes the last session of today. Let me thank members and the administration once again for attending. The meetings adjourn. The Special Finance Committee will be held at two PM tomorrow, thank you.